Welcome to the Village of Oklaun Board of Trustees regular meeting agenda. We are in the Village Hall on 46 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2023-17, and it is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. It is 7:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vorderer?
Present.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stocker?
Here.
Trustee Sock?
Here.
Trustee Pembroke will not be here tonight, and Trustee Desmond will not be here tonight.
We have a quorum, though. Please rise and join me in the plenum. Veterans may salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public comments tonight, Madam Clerk?
No public comments.
Okay. Any conflict of... Oh, yes. Special... Oh. I missed important, most important thing of the evening on this agenda. Okay. Okay. We're privileged and honored tonight.
Does this work?
From the Oklaun Special Olympic Softball Team.
Right.
Trustee Mallow will introduce?
So, so we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the tremendous achievements by the team that is pretty much behind me here. So, we wanted to take this evening to call the names of the athletes on the teams just so they can stand up and be recognized by our village. So, I'm going to bring up Scott Curtis. He's the manager of the special rec team. So, a lot of these athletes I've had, I have not seen them play softball, but I have seen them play basketball. They're tremendous athletes, and they should be recognized here. So, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the, for the time and the recognition, the achievement of my group. Call them out by name. Brandon Brown was our right fielder.
Why don't we line up right here in front of the board so we can take a picture? People can see on TV.
Great.
Okay?
Matt Campbell was our short center. Josh Carroll was our pitcher. Scott Curtis, our shortstop. Excuse me. Marcel Edwards, our second baseman. Kevin Edman, also a second baseman. Kaitlyn McManus, our short center. Dan Richardson, our left fielder. Dana Richardson, our catcher.
Dana, come over here. Okay, let's balance this out, okay? Okay, thank you.
Lenny Taylor, our center fielder. Mary Wolfe, our right fielder. Missing from the group, Garrett Tamling was our first baseman. Albert Tucci also played some second base for us. And Cole Kalovich was our third baseman.
Scott, real quick, can you tell everybody kind of what they went through? How many games did they have to play? Basically, what they won was gold, right?
Correct. That is correct.
Very top level of...
So, we played the district tournament in August. It was the first Sunday in August. We won two games. The second game that we won, which allowed us to qualify to play down in Springfield, was a 9-8 final. So, last out, there were two runners on, two outs. Cole, our third baseman, caught a foul pop-up. That was our...
Gold-winning play.
Correct. Then, we went to Springfield. The competition, maybe we were not in a bracket we should have been in, but they played really hard, and they won both of their games going away. We, we, we just blew everybody out.
That's awesome.
They were fantastic. We are the Oklaun Eagles.
Very cool. Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the board for having me.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You want to come?
I've got it.
Catcher?
Got it.
Yeah, can we spread you out a little bit more here?
Keep moving down. Keep moving down, guys. Matt, you stand right here in the middle, Matt. Okay. Right. All right, right there. Perfect.
If the board would stand up, we could maybe get in the picture.
Joe, you can go back to the back, back.
Go closer together, pretend like you're...
Back to the back.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Eagles, for making Oklaun proud. And I hope next year you bring home a second medal. Okay? Okay.
Go ahead and dismiss him if you like.
Football, too.
All right. For, for, for our athletes and our parents, we're now going to get into the regular business of the board. Might be time for you to leave and go celebrate, but you're welcome to stay if you want.
Good job.
Matty, good job, bud.
Good job, son.
Here comes. Here you go.
Thanks, buddy. Good job, Matt.
Great job.
Good job, Matt.
Nice job, man.
Sixth District trustee candidate. Work in the room.
You're in trouble, Ralph. Thank you. Thank you again. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda. First off, any public comments, Madam Clerk? I'll ask you again.
No public comments.
Any conflict of interest on this agenda with any trustees? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2023-10 dated September 12th, 2023. Motion, please. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of the regular meeting minutes, 2023-16 dated September 26th, 2023. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business by trustees will start in District Two. Trustee Oliniechek?
I have no new business to report.
Thank you. District Three, Trustee Mallow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things I had. Just first, congrats to our HR department. They, they never get so much recognition, so we're going to go ahead and congratulate our HR department, Janey and Darlene, for the pumpkin carving contest, pumpkin decorating contest that they did through, through the employees here. It was well received. I think coming years, we could have a bunch more decorations from the pumpkins that are taken from our Fall Fest. So, congrats to the winner, Erin and Jody, from our records department, and Officer George is who they, I guess, they made a pumpkin of. So, he was the winner of our contest. So, I think it just brings good camaraderie to our group. All the, all the departments seem to participate in it, so it was nice to see. Secondly, or thirdly, secondly and thirdly, we have a Halloween contest currently ongoing. The village put that out on social media. It has it on our website. We are having a decorating contest for the Village of Oklaun. This town does up Halloween very well, I think, so I think this was a long time coming to have this contest. So, the village is, is taking applications for it. You can find that application online. We'll have some of the Arts and Events Commission will go out, and they'll have a voting system, and then somebody will end up winning. So, we'll have that announcement here at the board meeting. So, so look for that if you're interested in being part of that Halloween decorating house contest. And lastly, the Santa on the Green event. I'm going to remind everybody till that comes. Every, every year in the past, it's always been the Saturday after Thanksgiving. This year, we're going to do it the week after that, so it's going to be December 2nd. So, the holiday weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, will happen, and then the following Saturday is when we will have our Santa on the Green event. So, we're looking for some new characters, so we're going to do it upright. So, it should be a good time and bring the kids out. They love to sit on Santa's lap, and I'm sure he'll show up on time.
Thank you, trustee.
That's all I have. Thank you.
This is the first time we're doing this house Halloween decorative contest. I think there's a first, second, and third prize. So, hopefully, people get into the spirit of the, the holiday, or I guess it's not really holiday, okay? But trick or treat, and next year, we'll have even more houses with decorations. Thank you for your report, trustee. District Five?
No, no business. Thank you.
District Six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. We don't hear about a lot of things that our police department is involved in and helps out with. Last Friday, there was a team and a couple of our Oklaun officers, one of them sitting up here, Craig Zellhart, and one of our other Oklaun officers were present at St. Catherine of Alexandria School, and they did active threat training for all the teachers. My sister happens to be a teacher there, and she came home afterwards and told me the intensity and the quality of the training that they received that day. She went so far as to show me on my 16-year-old son, she had him lay down. Not only do they show them, you know, how to react, what to do, where to go, but then there's another part that involves stopping the bleeding, because I guess if you don't stop someone from bleeding, they can bleed out in a matter of minutes and wouldn't survive until, you know, help got there. And she said, when there's, like, in your leg, you have to needle on it. She got down and showed me on my son. So, the, the training that these officers give to these teachers, and, you know, they do this throughout Oklaun, or Officer Zellhart was telling me they've got one coming up at 1:23 in the next week. You know, again, just kudos to the team and to our officers who participate in this and the impact they have on the community. It, it, you know, it's just amazing, and I just want to make sure they receive, you know, credit for that. It's really great training. Thank you for that. And lastly, I just want to, in case you didn't notice, we have our village secretary, Kim Roach, sitting up here tonight, filling in very admirably for our village clerk, Claire Henning, who is in clerk training down in Springfield? Where's Springfield, Kim?
Yes.
So, Kim has been doing a phenomenal job filling in, and I just wanted to acknowledge her and thank her for the hard work she's putting in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
She's got a very cute blush, too.
She's doing a great job, Kim.
Thank you. Okay, village managers report?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the Board of Trustees approval and direction of the Fire and Police Commission to hire six patrol officers from the current eligibility list due to resignations and upcoming retirements. B, request Board of Trustees approval and direction of the Fire and Police Commission to hire one firefighter paramedic and promote one battalion chief due to recent resignations. C, request the Board of Trustees approval of the Appeals Board recommendation to allow a six-foot side yard variation to allow for a deck at 9837 Brant Avenue. D, excuse me, ordinance 231765, an ordinance grant and a variation for a six-foot side yard variation to allow for that deck at that single-family resident, 9837 Brant. E, request Board of Trustees approval of the Traffic and Safety Commission referral 6.0 for a four-way stop sign at 96th and Mansfield, replacing the current yield signs. And F is ordinance 231766, authorizing those traffic regulations. G, resolution 231763, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Oklaun and the Chicago Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. H, resolution 231764, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a master power supply agreement by the Village of Oklaun and MC Squared Energy Services to provide full requirement electrical supply-related services for the Village Electric Aggregation Program. I, resolution 231765, a resolution approving a change order for the pavement, pavement restoration work related to the Oklaun Regional Water System Transmission Main Bid Package Number 4B, Reliable Contracting and Equipment. We'll get that contract. J, resolution 231766, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the temporary construction and permanent utility easement agreement with SFGISFTP Chicago Ridge LLC, successor to the interest of the TPATT Chicago Ridge LLC as part of the Regional Water System Improvement Project, 6301 West 101st Street, Chicago Ridge, Illinois. And K, resolution 231767, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding and approving a contract with Reliable Contracting and Equipment Company for the resurfacing of certain sections of Southwest Highway adjacent to the restoration work for the Regional Water System Transmission Main in the amount not to exceed $287,000. And L, resolution 231768, a resolution of the Village of Oklaun, Kilk County, Illinois, appointing Patrick Creed to the Arts and Events Commission of the Village of Oklaun. A motion, please.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to remove H.
H? Okay, we are voting on A through L with the exception of H. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Okay, motions approved. H is a resolution 231764, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a master power supply agreement by, in between the Village of Oklaun and MC Squared Electrical Serv-, Energy Services to provide full requirements, electricity supply, and related services for the village's electric, electrical aggregation program. Discussion, please.
I'd like to bring Arnie up if he's here to the podium. Mayor, I think it's, it's important to kind of explain this just a little bit more for our residents, so they kind of understand what exactly this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I wanted to back up a little bit and give a little bit of history of the Illinois electric market. So, way back 25 years ago, in 1997, Illinois actually was one of the first states to deregulate electric production from the utilities. So, at that time, there was a 10-year transition period from 97 to 2007. ComEd sold off their coal plants to Edison Mission. They spun off their nuclear power plants to their sister company, Exelon Nuclear, and then they had some peaker plants that ended up going to Dynage and a couple other small companies. So, back in 2007, electric deregulation really got going, and it really impacted large commercial, industrial, and governmental agencies, even like Oklaun uses a lot of electricity here, Water District. And those customers are saving about 20% on their electric supply cost versus what ComEd charged. But there really wasn't any savings to residential customers. So, in 2011, the state of Illinois passed what they called the Electric Aggregation Opt-Out Program, which, if first the villages or cities had to put a referendum on an election in 2000, in Oklaun, it was 2012, the state passed in 2011, where the, all the residents could give the authority to the village board to enter into opt-out electric aggregation programs on behalf of the residents. And that passed pretty big in Oklaun. It was almost a two-to-one vote. So, in 2012, Oklaun started doing electric aggregation programs, where basically, they would go out for bids and, and get electric on behalf of the residents. And those programs early worked very well. Oklaun was in those programs basically 2000, early, like, January of 2013 till early 2017. So, for four years, the residents were saving right around $200 a year versus the ComEd price. And then, the market really got tight, where there was no savings. And then, there was a couple of years where Oklaun had zero aggregation programs. Basically, everybody could pick their own supplier or be with ComEd, and most of them were with ComEd. So, back in 2019, two companies, MC Squared and Elgo Energy, both Chicago-based companies, came out with a kind of a hybrid electric aggregation program. And that program basically said, we're, we're not going to save the residents any money. They're going to pay exactly what they pay with ComEd, but there's going to be civic contributions made. They're going to make some money on this. There's going to be a civic contribution made to the village, and then the village can choose what to do with those funds. And those were, you know, the first year of Oklaun was in that program, the civic grant was $100,000. Next year, they did it. Oklaun entered another program, and it was $100,000. And then, Oklaun in '21 entered a two-year contract where the civic grant was $160,000 a year. So, here's how that program works. Like, MC Squared, they don't take all the residents. They took about 30%, 35% of the residents in Oklaun. So, it's really an arbitrage thing. Almost everybody here now has what ComEd calls a smart meter. So, not only do they know how much power you use, they know exactly when you use it, by half hour, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And there's big power price variations depending on the time of day. Obviously, if you use a lot of power from 4:00 to 8:00, those are the highest prices of the day. So, what they're doing is taking those customers, kind of putting them onto the side, leaving them with ComEd, and they're grabbing the customers who maybe use more power early in the morning or late at night, where the prices are lower. So, they make some money, and then they share that money back with the village. That's basically a high level what that program is doing. Oklaun's not in a program. That program expired January of this year. We went out to bids on behalf of the village, and Elgo Energy has dropped out of that program, so there's only one company doing that program, it's MC Squared, and the civic grant has dropped down to 50 grand a year, you know, from $100,000 a year a couple of years ago, or $160,000 previous contract. So, it is a lot less money. The village has recommended to the trustees to enter a one-year deal, see how it works for one year. It's going to run exactly like the previous three aggregation program ran in the village, but it is less money than what you guys were receiving in previous aggregation programs.
All right. So, the takeout of this is that the residents aren't going to be paying anymore for the electric that they have now.
Correct. It'll be exactly what the ComEd price. ComEd has a summer rate, a winter rate, and it can change in, in the individual months just a little bit, but it'll be exactly the same. It's still on the ComEd bill. There'll be no change to that. And if they don't want to be part of the program, they can opt out at any time without any fees.
Right. Okay.
And, and what we've encountered over the years, and what we try to explain, because it does get a little complicated, is it doesn't hurt the resident in any way, because as you just said, they'll pay no more than what they would pay if they were with ComEd. The benefit can vary from 160 to 50 to 100. That's money that comes to the village. And Arnie and your group also are contributors to our Fall Festival and consistently have been... You've, you left that out. I think that should be thrown in there as well. I, I remember your first couple of years, like you said, 200 bucks a household. There was significant savings in the first four years.
Yes.
And you even said, I remember when you first came here, ComEd eventually will, it will compress, and the savings will diminish. In the couple of years, we were out of it, but the recommendation is to at least get this $50,000 savings.
For sure.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Arnie.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve H.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion approved. Village clerks report.
Disbursement Resolution 2023-17D dated October 10th, 2023, in the amount of $13,020,761.19.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
All right, the checks are in the mail. All right, the village presidents report. A is a request Board of Trustee approval of the Liquor and Tobacco Commission's recommendation, 6-0, for a Class F V license beer, wine, and video gaming at Rosati's Pizza, 6230 West 95th Street. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion approved. B, ordinance 231767, an ordinance decreasing the number of Class F liquor license by one and simultaneously authorizing the issuance of a new Class F V liquor license by the Village of Oklaun, 95th Oklaun Plaza Incorporated, doing business as Rosati's Pizza, 6230 West 95th Street. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
I, I'd just like, is anybody here from that business? Please step up if you want to talk about it. Now, it's important to point out that when you brought your business to the Village of Oklaun two years ago, we required you to prove that you had a viable business. We gave you a beer and wine license. Yet, that time, you wanted the full license for gaming. You've been established for two years, and now you've come back to the board, okay, requesting this license. First off, I want to thank you for bringing your business to Oklaun. I hope it's successful, and I hope gaming will give you a little bit more profit there. If you have anything...
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for approving this. It will really, really help me a lot to, you know, stay in the business for a long time.
Well, I thank you. We've approved it? Okay. Good luck. Okay, C is request Board of Trustee approval and liquor, of the Liquor and Tobacco Commission's recommendation, 6-0, for a Class B liquor license for Delphi Capital, doing business as Mr. P Beverage Depot at 5711 West 3rd, uh, West 95th Street. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
And D is ordinance 231768, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Class B liquor license by the Village of Oklaun due to a change of the corporate name and doing business as Delphine Capitals, Mr. P Beverage Depot, 5711, 5713, West 95th Street. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Is there anybody here in the audience from there? Okay, thank you. And E is request Board of Trustees approval of the Liquor and Tobacco Commissioner's recommendation, 5-1-0, for a Class D license at Foodies, 9652 South Pulaski Avenue. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Motion here from Paul, and a second from Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Oleniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
And F is Ordinance 231769, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a class, a new Class D liquor license by the Village of Oaklawn to Oaklawn Foodie, doing business as Oaklawn Foods, 9652 South Pulaski Road, Oaklawn, Illinois. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oleniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion approved. I see we have, uh, the owner of that store in the audience. You want to step up and explain your business model?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all the board for approving the license. Uh, we started as a convenience store and, uh, uh, we wanted to have beer and wine in the store and, uh, big bottles, because the Oaklawn license allows us only to have big bottles of alcohol. So, that's what we plan to have in the store.
And, and you two were agreeable to opening your business, proving your viability for six months?
Yes.
Before you came back to the board?
Yes.
Well, you've been successful for six months. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do a good job with it, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'd be required of support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. General matters, you know, um, several residents have come to me over the past couple of years and asked me to consider recognizing Oaklawn servicemen and veterans who have served this great country over the generations by doing a flag program called, um, I guess, military service, uh, it's called, uh...
Hometown Hero.
Yeah, Home Heroes Program, right, right. But anyway, um, I had a lot of people ask me about it, but nobody wanted to do the work that was involved to do it. But I have had a couple of volunteers, retired Marine Mike Setko and our chamber member, uh, Dave DeWarr, who have stepped up and have told me that they will organize and, uh, find our residents who are willing to participate in this program. And hopefully, we can get enough residents who want to have a banner flying along 95th Street over the next summer. It'll be there, hopefully, for our Fourth of July parade, and it'll hang there for the summer. Uh, we'll take them down in the winter, um, and hopefully get them back up again for the second year. And when they're retired, the residents who purchase these, and they will be purchased by the resident, there will be no cost to the Village of Oaklawn or its taxpayers. And when the program is finished, we will return those banners. I would say, watch for some details as the committee, our Chamber of Commerce, comes up with the program, and I will be keeping the Village of Oaklawn through this medium informed in how they can participate in that program. That's all I have. I'll take a motion for dismissal or adjournment. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out. I see we got some students back there.